Special meeting to order for Thursday, August 5th, 6:30 PM. And can we stand for a pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Fire evacuation to the rear of the chambers in case of an emergency. Exit council chambers, proceed far enough away from the building, a safe distance to the sidewalk, and you can go to my left, your right, out the council chambers, down a flight of stairs, and out the rear of the building, a safe distance. Roll call, please.
Ken Nelson.
Here.
Linda DeGray.
Here.
Virginia Higley, absent. Mary Scott.
Absent. Frank Limo.
Here.
John Petronella.
Here.
Vinnie Grillo.
Here.
Nelson Correa, absent, and Richard Suzak is here. Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion.
Before you make your motion, just, I'd like to sit Vinnie Grillo for the remainder of the meeting to take the place of the absent commissioners.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we have a 10-minute recess to allow staff to join our meeting.
Second.
Motion's made in seconded, all in favor of a 10-minute recess, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Okay, 10-minute recess. I apologize again to everybody, we're trying to find out what's going on. I'd like to call this meeting to order, just to give everybody a little information of what's going on. I did just hear from town staff, and our staff liaison is caught in traffic. She will be here in five minutes. So at this point, I'm going to request another five, make it 10 minutes. If we get early, we're early. And again, I apologize.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we have another 10-minute delay, recess until the staff gets here.
Motion's made in seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, and again, I apologize to everyone. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting back to order, and we're going to start off again with roll call.
Ken Nelson.
Here.
Linda DeGray.
Here.
Frank Limo.
Here.
John Petronella.
Here.
Vinnie Grillo.
Here.
And Richard Suzak is here.
Okay, and again, I will see alternate Vinnie Grillo for the remainder of the meeting, and public notice, please.
The Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing at their special meeting of Thursday, August 5th, 2021, at 6:30 PM in the Town Hall Council Chambers, 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut, concerning the following application. Public hearing to opt out of the provision of Public Act Number 21-29 regarding accessory dwelling units, ADUs, per Section 6F.
Thank you. Okay, Lori, would you like to give us a presentation?
I will do my best.
That's all we can ask for.
So recently, Public Act 2129, which includes a requirement for towns to allow accessory dwelling units by right, was passed, and there is an opt-out provision. So the purpose of this was to promote Federal Fair Housing Act, to provide more affordable and varied housing for the community as a whole. So the differences here, first of all, the, we, the town of Enfield actually allows accessory dwelling units, which are usually known as accessory apartments or in-law apartments. The difference, well, the definition of that in-law apartment is basically it should be attached to the building, the housing structure. The owner has to occupy at least one of the, either the house or the apartment. There should be ingress and egress between the two units, and we have size requirements and minimum lot requirements, and that it also has to be on sewer and water. The proposal in the Public Act requires that the towns allow accessory dwelling units. And the accessory dwelling unit is more like a separate apartment. It can be separate, it can be up to 1,000 square feet on any single-family lot, whether or not it has sewer or water. Let's see, I'll just go through the definition. It's a separate dwelling unit that is located on the same lot as the principal dwelling unit of greater square, the principal dwelling unit of greater square footage, has cooking facilities, and complies with or is otherwise exempt from any applicable building code, fire code, and health and safety regulations. So we haven't quite defined that exemption yet, but it just seems that if there is an exemption, they would be able to use that. However, right now, our building department does not require any unit size, so therefore we can actually, anybody that would come in under this act would be able to have any unit size. So, okay. So some.
100-square-foot, one-bedroom apartment.
Theoretically, yes, because we don't have any minimum in our building code.
Okay.
So the big difference also is that an accessory or in-law apartment, under the building code, is basically just another room, where an accessory dwelling unit is actually an apartment and has to fall under all of the building codes and fire codes with, you know, firewalls and things between, if they are attached. So that's a big difference. Where am I now? I think that, as a planner, I understand the intent of the act. It's really to try to get all of these, you know, possibilities out there to make things affordable, to make varied unit sizes, to allow for just social equity in general, as far as housing. I do believe that we could get into a bit of a pickle here, because we have, for instance, Thompsonville has, I mean, all of those lots are probably under 5,000 square feet, and then you start adding double-dwelling units on top of the fact that there might be already another dwelling unit on the property. So I think that we need to find a happy medium, but it's up to this commission to decide how they want to do that.
Would a multifamily home, they're not covered by this. It's single-family only.
Yeah, single-family, but a lot of the units here are single-family.
But no lot minimum.
Correct.
Right. So a 5,000-square-foot, single-family home, lot, could do it.
Yep.
Okay.
So I don't, I don't really have much else to present, that's kind of it. If you want me, I could, I could go through the, the minimum requirements for each, as I did at the last meeting.
Um, I don't think so at this time. No.
Okay.
I think we're good. All right, so Rich, you have a bunch of concerns?
Yeah, in terms of, you know, obviously what we have is we have regulations, you know, are in place so that the development that occurs in town is predictable, it's consistent across the board in terms of, you know, what we're going to get, not necessarily allow anybody to do whatever they want to do without having anybody overview whatever they're doing. It's, it should be, it obviously should always meet the local and national, you know, building and fire codes, only because that's protecting, you know, life safety, and that, you know, the fact that they don't have to conform to those codes is very discerning. You know, I also, you know, believe that, you know, there should be a minimum size for the kind of dwelling units that's going to be placed, to allow for it to be reasonably usable, not necessarily just as a basis of income for somebody, and that, you know, the lot that it's located on should, should be adequate for, you know, the intended use of, you know, the housing that's being, you know, proposed, not necessarily just randomly, you know, allowing any lot to have an additional dwelling unit added to its, you know, its And, and I think that, you know, I, you know, it, one of the reasons why, you know, we enjoy having a single-family, you know, home in, you know, a development, is normally that, you know, we don't necessarily want to have a lot of external noise and, you know, I guess chaos associated with people who aren't, you know, if, normally there should be an owner, you know, occupied unit, and according to these, you know, they don't even have to, the owner does not even have to live there, so basically you can rent it out to anybody, and, and then all of a sudden, there's nobody who's accountable for what's occurring, you know, at that particular location. So I also have some more, but I'm sort of going brain-dead a little bit, so I'll leave it off for somebody else.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I'm looking at the comparison that staff gave us between our act with in-law apartments versus this new statute, and on its face, it's, it's just troubling to me because it seems like that a single-family residential subdivision can easily become a multifamily development. I mean, it's basically saying that you can put a structure in a lot of a single-family dwelling in any neighborhood, and it almost takes away our oversight as well. And that's the big thing that jumped out on me, and when you look at the side-by-side comparisons for our requirements for in-law, these don't, there's like 90% of the requirements on this new statute that are not there, and almost like just throws our whole statute out the window. If you look at the side-by-side that was provided us, so that's my issue with it. I think, you know, we probably would have been more, there is some people here that would probably speak, but I think if, it's hard to understand legislation for laypeople, for anybody that's not, you know, making the sausage, and I think a lot of people would be here in opposition to this, or express their feelings about their neighborhood becoming, instead of a single-family residential neighborhood, a multifamily. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Yeah, I tend to agree with Commissioner Limo. Lori, these units, dwelling units, the utilities can be shared from the primary residence, I believe, meaning you don't have to bring in a separate utility, so you could tap in off the primary residence, that sewer line, electrical, et cetera, I believe, the way that I understand this. So you're going to take, you're going to take what this commission has done for many, many, many years about putting zoning together for this town and creating single-family districts and so forth, and you're going to abolish all of that, therefore making the, this Fair Housing Act primarily the new zoning commission, I guess, because we won't have a say if somebody wants to put up a primary residence in their backyard. So to put it in perspective, if you thought you had a private backyard where you could have a picnic, now your neighbor on either side of you could be a front yard of a new dwelling unit, driveway and so forth, et cetera. So I find it troubling with that, so people who have been here for many, many years, and if that happens, it could chase people out of the, out of the town, never mind the neighborhood. And I think that for people who don't want to do anything like that, it can, you know, it's, it can have a negative effect to depreciate the value of houses. And, and again, I'm just having, you know, trouble trying to figure out why this would be a good thing for the people of this town. So anyway, that's my two cents. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. What's that? He's good. What's that?
You know, you know, I can't just be quiet. If this goes, if this act is allowed, it puts a huge demand on our infrastructure, our sewer lines, our water lines, our school systems, that, that hasn't even been considered. If you have two houses on one lot that was developed as one lot, you're going to increase the number of usage of everything. So I have issues, and I agree with all of the things that have been stated, but that, to me, is something that we haven't talked about, so.
Thank you. Okay, I have a few issues. First, I guess the most important would be public safety, the concern about addressing. You know, we all have addresses now, so we're going to make them A, B, C? I mean, how does that work when there's an emergency? Next would be driveway cuts, so every house now could potentially have another driveway going to wherever they decided to put this other dwelling. Another, Enfield being such a wet town, I look at all the drainage issues that, you know, my neighborhood, when Star built it, there's a swell that runs through all the backyards and ends up in the public storm system. Well, all that open space or greenery is possibly developed now, so that additional water is going to go into the drainage system, which wasn't designed to take on all this additional water and runoff. Again, the sewer and water, if you basically took every single family and made it a multifamily, the water and sewer lines were not developed to carry that additional infrastructure. My biggest thing is, we as a commission, if we decide, somebody comes to us and wants to do something like this, we as a commission can make our own decision on a case-by-case basis without our hands being tied, you know, and there may be a situation where this would work for a particular person, but to say that everybody has a right to put up a 1,000-square-foot, three-bedroom house in their backyard, that's, that's just absurd, when developers of this town, like John had said, forever have been put through the hurdles, you know, designing everything that would carry the amount of homes that are built, and now we're just going to say, well, it's okay to double that, because realistically, that's what could happen here. So those are my huge concerns with this. Any other questions before?
I agree. The biggest thing is what Commissioner Petronelli said, it's our properties. I bought my property with the land, I have privacy, you start putting houses up, I'm going to think the biggest thing is the depreciation of our home values. That's, that's my biggest thing. I see that happening. No one's going to, you know, when you buy a house, if you want to live next to three houses in your backyard, you buy a house like that. That's my biggest problem. That's my biggest problem, the depreciation of the homes. He's absolutely right on that. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Lori, anything you want to add before I open it to the public?
I want to make one more comparison, if I may.
Sure.
We have zoning in there for rear lots, if you will. And there's a certain criteria that's met for that. I have a parcel that's just under five acres, and I would have difficulty trying to create a rear lot with what I have. And that's on five acres. And this would allow, many lots in town are a third acre, a quarter acre, half acre, two full dwelling units, houses on one parcel. And I just can't see it. It's just hard to imagine that happening in many of the residences here in town. Thank you.
Right. Just one more thing, just dovetailing off what you were saying about the numbering, the process of A, B, and C. I have some experience with that, you know, spending a lifetime in Thompsonville at the Fire Department, fighting fires down here. There is currently lots down here that have houses behind houses. There are several of them that I can pick off the top of my head. And I remember it being difficult and having some situations relative to rear lot, you know, houses behind houses and trying to find them. So that's something, that's a good point. I think that definitely a safety concern. It could be confusing when you have the A, Bs, and Cs and rear lots, and that's a good point, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to make that point. Thank you.
And again, with Commissioner Petronella, you know, the five-acre rear lot, like I had said, you know, Enfield has ZBA, so you could challenge it through there. And I know this particular commission, if we see a regulation that we don't agree with, we go forward and we amend it, and we make it to where it works for everybody, because ultimately, that's what we're here for, is to do the best for everybody. And sometimes, regulations are a little skewed, or they don't fit every single situation. And I think we're pretty good at trying to work with everybody to get the best for everybody. So. Okay. At this time, I'd like to open this up to the public. If you would like to speak to the commission, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Due to the minimum amount of people, I will do five minutes for the first time, five minutes for the second time, and three minutes for the third time. So anybody who would like to speak, please come forward.
Hi, I'm Lorraine Creedon, 57 Cottage Road, Enfield, Connecticut. I have a couple of questions. Will you answer questions as I go along?
We will write them down, and then when you're done speaking, everybody's done speaking, we will address them at that time.
Okay. So first thing, in that list that you just did the comparison of, I wasn't sure what ZP stood for.
What was that?
ZP under, zoning permit.
So zoning permit is an administrative.
Okay. So my understanding is that these would, the houses would not, if a single-family house would not have to be owner-occupied. That does concern me. But we already, we do have houses that aren't owner-occupied, so that's not anything new that would be happening. I also wondered, it said that we could opt out, but we need to develop or have in place an affordable housing plan. And I didn't know if we have that, or if that's part of our new conservation and development plan, planning process, or if that's where it will go. Then, let's see, Plan of Development, yeah, that was that. And then, my understanding would be that they still need to meet the zoning regulations. So if they were building a separate building, you'd still have to have the setbacks and driveways and all that kind of stuff, would still have to meet the current zoning regulations. So maybe it's not such a bad thing. I haven't made a decision on that one yet. And that they still would be permitted, have to be permitted, so they would be reviewed by the staff, correct, and before anything is approved. So those were kind of my questions. I'm concerned about affordable housing in Enfield. I think that we have a housing issue, and I think that we need to address. I'm not sure that this is exactly the right way to address it. But if we're opting out, and we do develop an appropriate plan for affordable housing, I wouldn't be opposed to that.
Thank you. Anyone else? If so, come forward. Gretchen?
Hi there. I'm Kristi Antonio, 18 Montano, just right down the road, homeowner of a single-family residence and a single-family neighborhood. I just want to speak in strong favor of accessory dwelling units. I do oppose opting out of the recent provisions in the state legislation. I agree, I am very concerned generally with this country, the state, and our towns' affordable housing. I don't think that accessory dwelling units are the only answer. I think that they are a very small piece of the puzzle. But I think that adding them, the flexibility of accessory dwelling units is a benefit for all. I know there's a lot of concern about what other people do on their property, and who else lives on, you know, your neighbor's property. You know, I'm a strong believer in that we should be able to live our lives without excessive overreach of our neighbors, even our government as well, a limit in place. Yeah, I mean, like I said, I don't think that, you know, having more flexible accessory dwelling units, opportunities, I don't think that it's the catch-all savior to affordable housing. But at the same time, I don't think that it's a drastic nightmare situation. You know, I, for one, like I said, I live in a single-family neighborhood. I would welcome more neighbors, right? I don't have a giant lot size, right? If I wanted to be away from people, I could buy a larger, you know, parcel of land and keep away from people. I don't think that it's my right to really stop somebody from living next door to me. That's just my opinion. In addition, I am, you know, very conscious of the future of the world. Environmentally, we're not doing so hot. Not so happy with sprawly development, not quite efficient ADUs can be very efficient just by the minimal amount of land that they use. Electricity, heating and cooling costs, these are, you know, pretty intensive uses. And just overall, I'm not a fan of how restrictive our town has been with accessory dwelling units and minimum lot sizes, and just restrictive zoning overall. You know, I think we should encourage people to live in Enfield. I think we should let homeowners build ADUs if they want. I don't think that we need to regulate who lives with our neighbors. It's none of our business. And again, I, again, in favor of accessory apartments. I do oppose backing out, but if we do back out, I would strongly advise that we really seriously revise our accessory dwelling unit provisions.
Thank you. Welcome.
Gretchen Pfeiffer-Hall, 4 Summers Road, Enfield. I'm in favor of opting out. I believe that Enfield already has a wide variety of housing options. We have many multifamily affordable units. We have affordable housing complexes in town, so I think there are many options. I think that Enfield is welcoming to people of all socioeconomic status. And that when somebody buys a home, that, and they've lived there for years, that they sort of expect, they've invested in their home, they've invested in their neighborhood, and I think that they have a right to expect that situation to continue. I sort of wish that you had let Lori explain all the things that you have already heard, because I tried to catch up and read on this, but I believe that you're able to opt out because we have 10% affordable housing already. Is that correct? And, or 10% was sort of the threshold, and we're already at just under 13%. So we're above that threshold, and we already do allow accessory apartments. And I don't believe that they are that onerous for somebody to apply to construct one or to add it to their existing home. So I just, I just think that when you invest in your property, that you have a right to expect that the neighborhood that you built, that you bought into will remain that way. And I think there was something in here about parking, that the town may require so many parking spaces per unit, and this new bill has no regulations. Is that correct? And if it is correct, I think that parking in some neighborhoods is already a problem. And in this day and age, every household has multiple vehicles, and even with single-family homes, I mean, sometimes people have cars parking not just in their driveways, not just on the street, but on their front lawns. I have a neighbor who has a large family, and their vehicles are parked between the street and the sidewalk. And when I try to pull out onto the main road, I feel like I'm taking my life into my hands every morning, because the cars come flying up the street, and it's very difficult for me to see. So I just think that Enfield is welcoming, that our zoning regulations are pretty fair, and that this bill takes away the right of the town to regulate its development. And I just think it would be very, very chaotic. That's it.
Thank you, Gretchen. Anyone else? Come forward. Welcome.
I'm Brian Blair, 39 Dartmoor. I am very much opposed to us adopting this. I think we should opt out. You guys did a great job of articulating a myriad of reasons why this is a bad idea. And, you know, at the end of the day, that wording is so vague. This could be radically abused. You could have, you know, high-density rental income, basically enterprising, happening all over the place. And effectively, it dismantles our sovereignty as a city. It removes your ability to exercise your good judgment as you have, causing this community to be a nice place to live. As far as affordability, you know, I moved here three years ago because it was affordable here, much more affordable than where I lived. And, you know, we're empty nesters. We wanted to move into a condo, and it was, the taxes were favorable, the cost of living here was favorable, and it was, it's a good place. It's still, it's relatively inexpensive when you consider the surrounding communities. So we do have affordable housing here already. It's, you know, where I live, very high-density housing was just installed in front of where I live, and it has dramatically reduced our quality of life. It was zoned properly. It's sort of an apartment complex, but it's just such an enormous number of people living in one very confined space. Now, we have issues with trespassing and unruly children and all kinds of things. It's a significant problem. So, you know, more density is not, something is going to be welcomed by everybody. And, you know, whereas I think affordable housing is important, it can be handled in such a way where you all can do your job, exercise your good judgment, planning and zoning, and enable affordable housing to exist here in a way that is more sensible than just, you know, throwing up housing units anywhere, anybody would like to choose them, and not being able to stop it. So I strongly feel we should opt out.
Thank you. Anyone else? Going for the first time? Did you want to speak, Ms.? No? Okay, going for the second time. Come on up.
Lorraine Creedon, 57 Cottage Road. I was glad to hear that we're at 13% affordable housing. However, I would hate to see that we think that that's an acceptable level. I think that affordable housing is very important, and I don't think that we should be setting, you know, like, we shouldn't take our hats off and go, phew, we're done. Like I said, I think, I like this, the zoning commission having more control than what this law allows, but I really think that we have a lot of work to do in Enfield on affordable housing.
Thank you. Anyone else for the second time? And the third time? Okay, seeing none. Let's address some of their questions and...
Mr. Chairman, would you like me to?
Please.
Kind of take it?
Sure.
The affordable housing plan that the act references is something new to the state. All the towns are going to have to do that. We are exempt from the 8-30G regulations for affordable housing. And that means that if somebody came in with that sort of application, we would not have to accept it, because we are already exempt. However, with that said, we still need to, and I agree very much with you, that we still need to work on our affordable housing and come up with housing types and styles that the younger generation can afford, the empty nesters, the college student, or somebody of that nature, those that are making minimum wage. I mean, they still need to live someplace, and we need to accommodate that. The building...
Can I follow up on that?
You're going to have a chance to come back up.
I see you're understanding something.
Okay. So the Balkan area requirements of zoning will have to be met with the accessory dwelling unit as is proposed in the act. So setbacks, coverage, things of that nature. And the zoning, the ZP just means that it would be a zoning permit, which would be disreviewed by staff to make sure that those Balkan area requirements would be met. And with the promotion of the need for affordable housing, we do need to do this affordable housing plan. We will be doing that probably with our POCD, since we're working on it at this point. And every time we go for a grant, we need to show how we are promoting affordable housing in our town. So the state requires us to be looking at this at all times. So we will be, you know, moving forward with that, hopefully. Christian, is it Christian? Yeah. So I agree with you. Again, we do need to be looking at affordable housing. I think that we will be looking at that... I think that we will be looking at that whether we opt out or not because we are in the process of updating our zoning regulations and our plan of conservation and development, both all at the same time. So, and if you're interested in that, I'll give you my card. Anybody else that's interested, I'll give you my card. Come and join us. You didn't really have too many questions, I don't think. Just some great statements. And Gretchen, yes, we've got wide variety of housing options. And I understand the need for predictability. The parking is an opt-out provision, but that is not a subject of tonight's meeting. So we didn't include that. But we haven't discussed whether they want to opt out of that or not. So that, stay tuned. And Brian, Mr. Blair, again, you just stated your concerns and I think, well said, and you agree with planning and zoning. Those are the questions that I wrote down, anyway.
Thank you, Lori. Great questions. I think Lori answered all of them. As far as affordable housing, what you have to look at is what's not built, but what is approved. So my time on this commission, we've approved 20 res, and these are ballpark numbers, 20 residential units at the old YMCA. The Enfield Housing Authority came in and we approved, I'm going to say it's somewhere around 200 new units right off of Enfield Street. Blair Manor just came in and got approved for 50 units, just about. South Road has an approval in place for approximately 400 units. And the Felician sisters came in last meeting and they're talking about putting in 400 units that will solely be fair housing for the elderly and low income. Now, they're just in the beginning stages of talking about this. And by keeping it within our town, we can try to work with them and come up with a happy medium that meets everybody's wants. And, you know, if we end up putting 400 units at the Felician sisters, well, we don't have to stack them up in everybody's backyard. So if you take all these units that are approved, now, we can't determine whether they're fair housing or high rent. That's not our purview. You know, you have almost 1,000 units that are unbuilt but approved in the town of Enfield. So to say we need more housing, well, you got to look at what, they're just waiting for the developer to purchase these properties and they're going to be built. We're at 13% now. They made this law for towns that are under 10%. Otherwise, they wouldn't have given us the opt-out clause. So Enfield is doing its share. Everybody can always do better. But there's a lot of towns that don't do anything. And those are the towns that really, I think, this should be more addressing them instead of us who try to deal with it. I agree with, I believe it was Brian. Enfield is an affordable town. We have, you know, nice-sized yards with our own privacy. And, you know, I wouldn't have that anymore if somebody built a house right in my side yards or my backyard. And then you got driveways going everywhere. They block my water from flowing through the drainage. And if I'm correct, they do not have to meet Enfield's regulations as far as lot coverage and setbacks. Am I correct, Lori? Right, they can put the house anywhere.
That's what I was saying. They still would have to maintain the Balkan area requirements.
Okay. So lot coverage, too?
Yeah, lot coverage as well.
Okay.
So there is some, you know...
Because when reading this, they said up to 30% coverage. We only allow 20%. So there is an additional 10%.
That may be right. I haven't read the whole thing again lately.
So all I want to do is make it clear that there is 1,000 units pending in the town of Enfield right now that haven't been built that could end up being affordable housing. How they're going to turn out, again, I don't know. So, go ahead, Commissioner Suzanne.
Mr. Chair, I just want to reinforce the fact that, you know, with the increase of, you know, units, you also get increased traffic and parking. But, you know, I guess what you have to look at is that, you know, if everybody had good intentions of, you know, keeping, you know, I guess, things in their control, it would be easy for us to, you know, actually adopt this. But the fact that there's always people out there who are looking for the loopholes and are looking to create, all they're looking for is income. And they don't necessarily care what happens. It's not owner-occupied. There's no accountability. And anything happens in terms of, and then they say, oh, my bad. You know, oh, I didn't realize I did this. Sorry, I didn't realize it's that. But it also, it affects your neighbors that are there because of the fact that they wanted to have a good life and they saw that this is what they want to invest their money in and, you know, their futures in. And all of a sudden, it could be turned upside down if you get, you know, too many apartments that have tenants that don't respect the neighbor's, you know, rights. And they say, well, you know, I can blare my radio as loud as I want. I can have a party whenever I want. You know, I don't necessarily have to, you know, I can park wherever I want. I can do whatever I want. But, you know, and I know that, you know, I'm not saying that that's the majority. But that's what happens is that if you don't control it, then all of a sudden, things start spiraling out of control. And I think that what we're just trying to do is we're just trying to keep it predictable and consistent so that, you know, if you invest in a property, you know what you're going to get and you know it's not going to change overnight. And right now, we can't control that. Anybody can do whatever they want to do, however they want to do it. And most of the time, they're not accountable for what they're doing. And what we, you know, if everybody says, you know, treat your neighbor like you would treat yourself, then all of a sudden, you know, things fall into place. But that's not necessarily, you know, the golden rule that everybody lives by. And there's always people who take advantage of situations whenever there's some money to be made without realizing what it, how it affects other people's lives.
Thank you. Anyone else? John? Okay, Lori? Anything else?
No. If you want, I could just go over the procedure and the, if you want to move forward with this and take action this evening.
I get to open back to the public.
And that, too.
Okay, at this time, anybody who would like to speak in favor or against this, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, please. Going for the first time. Come on forward, Brian.
Just one point.
Just, Brian, name and address again for the record, please.
Brian Blair, 39 Dartmoor.
There you go. Thank you.
You mentioned the 30% requirement that you asked to allow a maximum of 1,000 ADU size or at least 30% of the size of the primary structure, whichever is smaller. But the next bullet says that "The construction of an ADU may not trigger more restrictive lot coverage requirements than applicable to the primary home, require greater setbacks, so on and so forth." This is ambiguous. It's not clear to me whether or not you're, if your home already takes up 30% of the size of the lot and then you add this, it says it can't trigger more restrictive. So let's say you add another 30. Now, you can take up 60. What is the point of having a percentage limitation on the structure? So those protections aren't there. I don't believe that was, it's not there.
I agree with you. Absolutely. Thank you. Anyone else?
Chris Antonio, ATN Montano. I just want to add two points. One was regarding affordability. As I mentioned before, I don't think that this is all about affordability. It's an option. It's a nice option to have. I think just as big, if not bigger, is having flexibility and variety of housing. It's great that we have a number of multifamily, you know, apartment and condo complexes across the town. There are some duplexes. I don't know about triplexes or quads. I used to live in a duplex. That's actually, we rented a duplex when we first moved to Enfield. It's a great, a great way to save on some housing, a bit more affordable. So again, but it's not just about the affordability with ADUs because we are giving homeowners the ability to do more with their land that they weren't able to or that's been overly restrictive. Again, you know, requiring them to have to live with family or owner-occupied. It's, it's just, you know, again, affordability, flexibility, variety. I think that, I think that these are key parts. The other piece I wanted to just add was about our rights as, I don't know, citizens of Enfield, citizens of, you know, Connecticut, the United States. We don't have a right to stop the world from changing around us. Houses, they can be investment opportunities. They can be investment vehicles. I don't think they should be. I think that houses should be homes. I don't think that we necessarily have to dictate home values above everything. I think that well-being matters. I think having a place to live matters. You know, just because we've restricted zoning to limit the number of houses just to, you know, prop up property values and everybody expects their property values to go up because that's the way it's always been. I mean, land is a limited resource, you know. And we develop more and it becomes more valuable just inherently. You know, placing more restrictions on that just so, you know, people that have already been, you know, met the requirements earlier and happened to buy, you know, at a good time. Luck of the draw, right? So, again, you know, we don't have a right to stop development around us. We have a right to have a say in it and to force our opinions. But we don't have a right to, you know, expect our neighborhood to never change or to expect our neighbors to never change or to, you know, our neighbors to always drive the same cars or ride the same bikes or do whatever they do or their kids to never grow up, right? Obviously, these things are kind of silly that I'm saying out loud. But, I mean, I don't know. I just think it needs to be said sometimes. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Lorraine, come on forward.
Lorraine Creeden, 57 Cottage Road, Enfield, Connecticut. I had a follow-up question for Lori about, she said that we were exempt and I didn't follow what we were exempt from or why that was important. And then I had one other comment. And that was on the, "May not trigger more restrictive lot coverage." In my reading of that, that's on page three of the accessory dwelling units in the pretty colored section. But it's, what it says is it may not be more restrictive. So if it's 20%, you can't make it 15. So, but you could have, I suppose, you could allow it to be 30, but it cannot be more restrictive. And that the, I think that that's, you know, I just wanted that, to say that and I'm sure that the board would be, the commission would be very clear about what's required and not required before they opt out or opt into this.
Lori, did you want to answer her question?
Sure. So the Affordable Housing statute is one that if you come into a town that is not over the 10% affordable housing exemption, they could propose a lot of variation of what would normally be required. And because it's an affordable housing application, the towns are almost, they almost have to accept it and approve it. It's really difficult to not. But if you're over that 10% exemption, meaning that we're over 10% of affordable housing throughout our housing stock, we don't have to accept that application.
Okay, anyone else? Going for the first time? Going for the second time? Gretchen?
Gretchen Pfeiffer-Hall, Forest Summers Road. So I don't want to be a contrarian, but I do think that as a community that we do have a right to regulate orderly development of our town. I'm old enough to have been around to see the ups and downs in values of real estate. So we don't always increase the value of our property. Sometimes it comes down and it comes down drastically. Right now, we're in a really big upswing, but the day will come where it's probably going to swing the other way again. I mean, New Englanders are kind of a funny group and we didn't used to have zoning. And you can go to other areas of New England where they don't have zoning and you have a very sort of disorderly development where you might have residential homes and then next door, you've got somebody's junkyard. And so the reason that towns have zoning is to protect not only your values, but also the safety and welfare of the community. So I believe that zoning is important and that we have a right and an obligation to our residents and our neighbors to have enforceable zoning regulations.
Thank you, Gretchen.
And I believe that this whole bill is exactly about affordable housing. And I don't say that in a disrespectful way. I think that many of the speakers, and Lori has said that, you know, affordable housing is important and for young families or young individuals starting out, that there certainly is a need for affordable housing. So, and I think that Enfield has already done its fair share and I'm sure that it will continue to. And whenever there are new developments coming along, it's usually, I believe, a requirement that they have a percentage of affordable housing in any new developments, especially if they're getting government funding. So it's a fact of life and a necessary one.
Thank you, Gretchen. Anyone else for the second time? Going for the third time? Okay, seeing none. How would the commission like to proceed?
Mr. Chair, I just want to sort of add a comment. In terms of, I heard a phrase that really hit home. And in terms of, the phrase was, "Houses should be homes." And these ADUs should also be homes. And, you know, the unfortunate thing is that there will be a lot of people who will take advantage of the fact that if they have an empty garage, they can turn that into an ADU. And it's not going to be consistent with what we envision as a home. It will not be consistent with what we see as being, you know, creature comforts and warm and fuzzy in the wintertime and cool and, you know, sleepable in the summer nights. It's going to be confined spaces that will be modified and adjusted because somebody's going to say, "I have an empty space that I'm not using and I can do whatever I want and nobody's going to stop me." And I think that that's what we're trying to not happen here. And we've even seen it with people coming before us saying, you know, somebody, you know, had, you know, an accessory apartment that was not, you know, approved. And the woman had, you know, mice and rats running around in her attic and her, you know, living room and everything. And, you know, and we were trying to convince, you know, the owner that he had to rectify it. And he says... And he says, and unfortunately, it's not that everybody recognizes what they're moving into. When you have dire needs and you want to go forward, you have, sometimes you're blinded by what you think you see and what you think you're getting. And ultimately, eventually, you wake up, and reality comes around and says, you know, "This is not what I thought I was getting. This is not what I thought I was going to be moving into. This is not how I want to live. But I'm stuck here because I have a lease for a year or two years or whatever." Because all of a sudden, you know, it's not like it's gonna be a month-to-month lease, or, you know, that they're gonna be there month-to-month, you know, all these owners are gonna want some commitment. You know, you gotta sign a lease for a year, you gotta do this, and all of a sudden, you're stuck in this lease that you might not want to be in. And I think that the regulations are there to, like you said, if everybody had the golden rule and the golden heart, and everybody treated everybody like they wanted to be treated, I think that we would not even be here talking about this thing. But the fact that there's so many people who take advantage of situations, and they try to, you know, take advantage of the people who aren't as knowledgeable as they probably should be when they're, when they're looking for something. And if a house was always a home, and a home is what we always strive to have, then I think that, you know, things just take care of themselves. But that's not reality. You know, the reality is that, you know, somebody's gonna hit you in the head, so, you know, there would be no need to have police out there, there would be no need to have any, you know, law enforcement if everybody had goodwill in their hearts. And I think that's what we're leaning towards. We wanna see that, you know, the goodwill that we try to develop and try to have in the town of Enfield will be maintained. And at this point, if this goes through, we don't control anything at all. People can do whatever they wanna do, however they wanna do it, and we can't say you can't stop. You know, it's just gonna snowball out of control. And I hate to say, you keep dwelling on the fact that, you know, there are always gonna be people who are gonna take advantage of other people, and will take advantage of situations. And the only way that we can prevent that is that somebody has to be able to step forward and say, you know, "That's not fair. You can't do that." You know, and at this point, you know, we're trying to be advocates for those who are not as well-versed in, or as, you know, as well-off as we are. And what we're just trying to do is at least maintain a certain quality of life in Enfield, not necessarily have it go downhill. And I'll get off my soapbox, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Commissioner Susak. Christian, along with what you're saying, I agree with a lot of what you're saying. You said you moved from a duplex to a single-family home. Now, we can't have it back and forth, but my question would be, why would you leave the duplex to move to a single-family home in a rural neighborhood and then wanna make that rural neighborhood just like the duplex was, and have people on top of you all the time? I don't understand that aspect. Your comments about more affordable housing and everything you said, not once did you address the issues about the infrastructure, the sewer, the water, the drainage that's gonna flood your neighbor's backyard. That's a big issue for your neighbor, and they have a right to be concerned about it, as we will be the policing agency to deal with it, because you put up a house in your backyard, and now Gretchen's yard's flooding. That's not fair to her, and she should have a big say on it. And what's the best about Enfield is, if you wanna live in an area with people all around, we have apartment buildings, we have condo complexes, we have over 55 cluster housing, and we have our rural neighborhoods. So you can pick whatever lifestyle you wanna live in Enfield, and that's what makes Enfield so diverse and great. Why would you wanna take the last areas where people have some privacy to grow a garden and do stuff, and make that cluster housing too, when you could go anywhere that offers that and live there? I don't understand that. So that would be my concern there, is just, you're not addressing who's gonna pay to fix all the drainage issues and the sewage problem when it backs up in your house because it's getting twice the use that it was supposed to be, or it was engineered to do. Those are my concerns. I wasn't gonna speak again, but since Rich did, and now we have to open it back up to the public, I figured I would speak. So, now, is the commission all the questions? Go ahead, John.
Just one comment for the record. Just note that this is a Fair Housing Act. This is not required to be affordable housing. In the document, it says, "ADU shall not be required to be affordable." So I know everybody's been talking about that, and that seems to be the point of why we're here, but it's not deemed to be affordable. Just wanted to make that clear for everyone, but it's a Fair Housing Act, not Affordable Housing Act. Thank you.
Right. Anyone else? Lori? Good. Okay, at this time, I would like it up, to open it up to the public for the third time. Anyone who would like to speak, please come forward and state your name and address for the record for the first time. Going for the second time. And the third time. Seeing none. How would the commission like to proceed?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to have the Town of Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission opt out of the provision...
No, we gotta close the public hearing.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Roll call, please.
Ken Nelson.
Four.
Linda DeGray.
Four.
Frank Alamo.
Four.
John Petronilla.
Four.
Vinnie Grillo.
Four.
And Richard Susak is four.
Okay, all in favor. Public hearing is closed. Now, I'll entertain your question.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to have the Town of Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission opt out of the provision of Public Act Number 2129 regarding accessory dwelling units, ADUs, per Section 6F, and to send a referral to the Town Council requesting the same. And the reasons why we are making this decision is that the regulations in the town of Enfield are in place to provide development that is predictable, consistent, equal and uniform, should meet all local building and fire and national codes for the safety of the inhabitants of the town of Enfield. It, this... No, no, no. This regulation would, you know, would create additional traffic and parking requirements. It would also start taxing and extending school systems and town services. The privacy, it would decrease privacy and the solitude, you know, of the adjacent residences where they would be built. It would create some stress for the emergency services when they're looking for house numbers and they're not really sure which house they're going to. And that, it will have an adverse effect on, you know, the residents of the town of Enfield.
Okay, motion's made.
Second.
Okay, motion's made and seconded. When you do vote on this, please state the number-one reason in which way you're voting, for or against, for the record. You don't have to read a list like Rich did, even if it's one of those, 'cause I think Rich wrote down. Just state one for the record. Go ahead.
Ken Nelson.
I am against this due to the fact that our infrastructure was never designed to take twice the load, and as it ages, this is nothing but a recipe for disaster.
Linda DeGray.
I...
Sorry, one second. Are we voting to opt out?
Yes.
So I should be for it?
Correct. Right.
Not against?
Right.
I would like to change my vote. I am for opting out, due to the fact our infrastructure cannot handle the excess. Sorry.
Linda DeGray.
For, for the reason that was just stated, the demands on the land, the impervious coverage that this would create, causing a greater stress to land and surrounding areas.
Frank Alamo.
Thank you. I am for opting out. My number-one concern is public safety, and I don't think this new state statute is in harmony with our current regulations. It's not in harmony with our current POCD, and I'm definitely against having this be part of our community. So I'm for opting out.
John Petronilla.
I am for opting out, and I believe one of the primary reasons is the overtaxation of the infrastructure and the land as well. I just think it's gonna be, also be a safety factor for the town. Thank you.
Vinnie Grillo.
I am for it. Main reasons for the safety for our town with all the cars and so forth, and I feel that it will depreciate our home values. Those are my reasons. Thank you.
And I, Richard Susak, am also for opting out, and my main consideration is that, you know, all the construction that occurs in the town should meet local and national fire and building codes for the safety of the inhabitants that are gonna be living there.
Okay, it's unanimous. Thank you, everyone, for coming. I appreciate your input. Lori, if you can make sure that this decision is posted in the newspaper and then moved to the Town Council?
Yep.
I would appreciate that.
Yes, I will.
And I thank you for coming in this evening.
I apologize for my tardiness.
That's quite okay.
Darn tobacco trucks. I'll make a motion to adjourn. I live in Suffield, what could I say?
Motion's made and seconded. All in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Gretchen. You live in Suffield, Lori?
Yeah.